Call to order the Monday, November 24th, 2025 meeting of the Eldesville Town Council. Anybody for the prayer?
I'll pray.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Lord, for blessing this town, giving us your wisdom for any decisions we make, even if we disagree. Understand, we disagree for the best of your glory in this town, in your name. Amen.
Chief?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Noel, when you're ready, please.
Scott Oldham.
Here.
Dan Swafford.
Here.
William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Here.
Pamela Samples.
Action to approve minutes for the November 10th, 2025 meeting.
Some of them.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Action to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll vouchers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? There were several resolutions this evening, the first of which is Resolution 35-2025, a transfer for the fire department.
Yes, so this came from the fire department to transfer from natural gas to gas and oil. And there are funds in there to make that transfer.
Okay, just for the public record, how much is it we're transferring?
$5,000.
Okay. Questions from council? Actions from council?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 35-2025, transfer for the fire department.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution 36-2025, additional appropriation from GE, sorry, from the general, lit ED and the drug education funds.
So for the lit economic development, it's $25,000. The town manager had requested that to pay for the air gear center and various things to complete that project. The $650 for the general is an encumbrance that we had in planning that we need to liquidate in order to move it to use for signs, so we need to reappropriate it. And for the drug education and equipment, that is for a grant to ask permission to spend it since they received the grant already. So we did not appropriate it in the budget.
Okay. Just a quick question for procedural. Darla, are you comfortable with all of these things from different funds under one roof? Or do we need to split them apart?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Questions from council?
Just a question on, you said there's an encumbrance from, was it Parks Department, you said, or planning?
No, so it was in the planning department. It was actually encumbered for Van Horn to put decals on the side of a vehicle that we didn't end up needing to use for that. So instead of taking additional funds out of the general, we're just going to liquidate that encumbrance and then use it for signs for the trail.
Okay.
And that $39,490 from the police department, or that's the drug education equipment, that's a grant?
It was a grant that we received a check in that amount for, and so in order to spend it in the lines, we have to ask permission to appropriate it.
Okay.
Other questions? Actions?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 36-2025, additional appropriation from the general, lit ED and drug education fund.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next resolution is 37-2025, surplus of DPW 1997 John Deere Gator utility vehicle.
Well, I'll speak. This is a vehicle that's used down at the wastewater treatment plant, and I guess just to keep it short, it's a 1997 John Deere Gator. It's old and it has been replaced. We need a surplus.
Okay, is this going through eBay or how are we doing this?
I'm sorry?
Are we doing this through eBay or Gov?
Gov.
Gov.
Yeah, usually it takes care of that.
Okay. Questions or comments from council? Actions from council?
I move approval of Resolution 37-2025 to surplus the John Deere Gator utility vehicle, 1997.
I'll second.
Motion is second. When you're ready.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is Resolution 38-2025, approving interlocal agreement with Monroe County traffic crash grant.
So the Monroe County Sheriff's Department has received a grant from the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute in the amount of $43,000, almost $44,000 for the purpose of establishing a major crash investigation team. And if the council approves this resolution, which approves the interlocal cooperation agreement between the town and the county, what would happen is there will be a team of eight people, six from county, two from the town, and the sheriff's department will be responsible for activating the team when there is a major crash, which is generally defined as fatal or catastrophic injury crash, any crash resulting in substantial risk of death or serious permanent disfigurement, crashes resulting in spillage or leakage of significant amounts of hazardous material, select serious bodily injury crashes, such as those involving emergency vehicles, school buses, government vehicles, and vehicles being pursued by law enforcement, or usually, unusually, complex crashes. And the purpose of the grant money is to pay for the overtime for the officers to participate in that team. And the way it works is that if the officer is called out to the team while he's on duty, the town of Ellisville pays the wages. If he works overtime due to his participation in the team, then the overtime is covered by the grant. If an officer finishes a shift at Ellisville, goes home, gets called back out, that overtime will be paid for by the grant money until the grant money runs out, and that is in Section 5.3, I believe. There's an understanding that once the grant money runs out, the team will keep doing what they need to do, but then the town will be responsible for paying the overtime. And the town will submit quarterly statements to the county for reimbursement.
Apologies to the council. I don't think I put the whole agreement in the packet that you're sitting in front of you. It was emailed to you because it was 75 pages.
It was pretty long. So the Monroe County Council approved the interlocal cooperation agreement at its meeting on November 18th, so what you have before you is a substantially identical resolution to that of the counties approving the agreement. So you should have the interlocal cooperation agreement, which was Exhibit 1, to the resolution, the scope of services the town is required to provide, which is Exhibit 2, and then you also have the grant agreement that the town is going to be subject to as a separate subject.
Questions from council?
I don't know if anybody here knows this, but has the city of Bloomington entered into this agreement also?
City is not part of this agreement.
They're not?
They're not.
Okay.
No.
This is a pretty standard boilerplate interlocal between the local.
Right. I just didn't know if it was.
Other questions, council? Any action?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 38-2025, approving interlocal agreement with Monroe County traffic crash grant.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, when you're ready.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next resolution is 39-2025, to explore reorganization with Richland Township, Monroe County, Indiana.
This was discussed by the town council at its last meeting. As the council was aware, at its November 10th, 2025 board meeting, the Richland Township Board passed a resolution to explore a reorganization with the town of Ellisville, and you should have a copy of that resolution in your packets. What is before you is the resolution by the town to accept that proposal and to explore the reorganization with Richland Township. This is just the beginning of the process.
This is basically.
No one's getting married. We're just talking about it.
This is putting into resolution form what we discussed at the last.
Correct.
Questions from council? Open this up for the public. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the council for action.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 39-2025 to explore the reorganization with Richland Township, Monroe County, Indiana.
Second.
Motion is second. When you're ready.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next is Resolution 40-2025, a resolution to approve the fiscal plan for the 90 annexation.
At its November, regular November meeting, the Plan Commission considered a proposal by Larry 92 to annex almost, well, 73.286 acres of land into the town of Ellisville. It's located on 8640 West Flatwoods Road, and the Plan Commission voted six to zero to forward the proposed annexation to the council with a positive recommendation, and you should have attached to the resolution the proposed fiscal plan for the 90 annexation.
Okay. Questions from council? Actions from council?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 40-2025. It's a resolution to approve the fiscal plan for the 90 annexation.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, when you're ready.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We have one ordinance on first reading this evening, which is Order 2025-26, the salary ordinance for about $20,000.
Yes, and so the only major changes to this were on the police department under the grant patrol as available for 2025. We had OPO, OWI, and we added in, and the traffic crash for the rate to be paid at two times. And then the other difference from 25 to 26 is going to be, we had to remove the $300 biometric screening from the salary ordinance because we were not going to be able to do that mixture with the new insurance changes.
Any comments from council on this? This is an ordinance on first reading, so. Okay?
What questions?
Go ahead.
And if this may answer your question, we did, I did add in there the board compensation for the passage that the council had made per being attended.
I'm sorry, Dan, did you have something?
Yeah, actually, two questions because you reminded me of that. The fireman first class and police officer first class certified, what does this give?
So that is for the 77 fund. We did that in 25, and it was also through double budget for 26 as well. So this is, on the 77 fund, you have to go into Empress and certify the base plus longevity. And so for the base, that's not what we pay them, that's the certified salary for the 77 fund.
So, I mean, this is going to be their salary or it's just to pay for the certification?
It's just for their retirement. So their retirement is a percentage of the base salary, and because of how the council has approved it in the past, when we looked at the budget last year, this was what I was told to do for 25, and we did the same thing for 26 because the 77 fund pays differently than the regular per for civilian employee.
And we essentially had to add the rank of officer first class, firefighter first class, which we never had, to comply with the requirements of the 77 retirement fund.
Correct. And it has to say on the salary ordinance certified, because that's how I have to put it in, that it's been certified by the council.
Okay.
All right. It's basically a bookkeeping thing for Indiana's per system to be able to action the retirement?
Yeah, I was just curious, 72,000, I didn't know if that was going to be a new position during all that's going on with this.
Just a want to find because of the law, the retirement.
Okay. And second question, and just some clarification, I know me and Lenny haven't discussed this, but town council members that serve on other boards would not be compensated anymore? What is the reasoning behind this?
Well, one of the, the biggest reason, I think, is because we already get paid handsomely for being on the town council. Secondly, we just had to tell our employees they couldn't get any raises at all, so I think that it needs to start with the town council.
Yeah, I'd agree with you, but I do agree that I do serve on a commission I have for twenty-some years, and there are times when I put more hours in on the planning than I do on the council, and my time's just as valuable as anyone else's. And I just, I don't like that. I don't know, you know, why it was done when I wasn't here because it only affects me and Pam, and it's just $50 a meeting. So I'm just upset with that, and the fact that I serve on two other boards that don't get compensated either, and no other council members wanted to serve on it back in the day, so I've been on those boards for years. So the little $50 was nice to, you know, reach out and say, hey, thanks for helping us here. So I'm not happy about it, but it is what it is, I guess.
Other comments, questions? It's an ordinance on first reading to come back at our next regularly scheduled meeting for the second reading. Moving on to the ordinances on second reading this evening are three, the first of which is 2025-27, to modify the Unified Development Ordinance.
The purpose of this proposal is to modify the definitions of minor and major subdivisions in the town's Unified Development Ordinance, and specifically to change the definition of a minor subdivision from the current definition of three or fewer lots to four or fewer lots, which would then make a major-sized subdivision five or more lots. And the purpose of this is to give the developers a little more flexibility and property owners a little more flexibility if, for example, they wanted to subdivide parcels and give parcels to their company. So if it's a minor subdivision, it does not go through the more rigorous process that a major subdivision goes through. Minor subdivision can be approved by the Plan Commission for four or fewer lots if it does not involve the opening or creation of a new public rights of way, public infrastructure, or utility main extensions, and it is not otherwise an exempt subdivision. So what you have before you is the proposed ordinance, which was approved by the Plan Commission, six to zero, with the recommendation to come to the council with a positive recommendation at its November meeting. You have proposed changes to the language, and those will be inserted in the Unified Development Ordinance, and this also required changing a schematic and also a chart for the minor residential subdivision. So those changes would be made across the board. If the court, if, if you want it. Sorry.
All right. Questions from council, if you can? Questions, comments from public? Seeing none, we're back to council for action.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-27, to modify the Unified Development Ordinance.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next ordinance is 2025-28, the annexation of 8460 West Flatwoods Road.
I'll take this. At its meeting on November 6th, the Plan Commission voted unanimously to provide a favorable recommendation to town council to annex a parcel totaling approximately 73.286 acres of land. Subject parcel is owned by Larry 90, is located 8640 West Flatwoods Road, Gospport. This is a super voluntary annexation of one parcel. The proposed annexation area is 37% contiguous to town of Ellisville, and 100% of the property owners are parties to the petition. The properties are currently zoned AGR, agricultural residential by Monroe County, and is recommended to be designated as agricultural. Agricultural, upon annexation, property will be located in Council Ward 1.
Okay. Do you have anything further on that?
No, petitioner couldn't be present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council? Anything from the public? I'm assuming that's a yes.
I just have a question, but I knew you'd make me come all the way up here. On the ordinance self in your packet, it says 8640, but on your agenda that you're voting, it says 8460. I didn't know if that makes a difference to you when you vote, but.
It certainly will.
I may have inverted the numbers incorrectly. I apologize for that.
Oh, and which one?
It is 8640.
Okay.
So the ordinance is correct.
Which one?
The ordinance is correct.
Okay.
It's 8640.
Thank you.
Otherwise, we're putting someone else's surprise. You're in the town.
Congratulations.
Publishers Clearinghouse.
All right. Anyone else? And we'll come back to council for action.
I move approval for ordinance 2025-28, annexation of 8640 West Flatwoods Road.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Whenever you're ready.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next ordinance is 2025-29, a rezone of 8631 West Flatwoods Road.
At its meeting on November 6th, the Plan Commission voted unanimously to forward a favorable recommendation to town council to rezone 8631 West Flatwoods Road from C2 Commercial 2 to Industrial 1 Light Industrial. 8631 West Flatwoods Road is located next to Ava's Waste Removal. Petitioner is MG3 Properties LLC, and they also own Ava's. Petitioner intends to construct self-storage units on the parcel. Petitioner started this project prior to the moratorium on storage units. Prior to the moratorium, self-storage units were permitted in C2 zoning districts, which is the current zoning. Under, after the Unified Development Ordinance was adopted, it changed the zoning for self-storage units from C2 to Industrial 1 and Industrial 2 with a special exception. Self-storage units have been constructed on the property to the west and have been approved for the property to the south. And that's it for me, and petitioner's representatives here, if you have any questions. I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Did Plan Commission hear this?
Yes.
And they said?
They voted unanimously.
Okay, sorry, I didn't catch that. Questions from council? From the public? Back to council for action.
I move approval of ordinance 2025-29, rezone 8631 West Flatwoods Road. Flatwoods Road, sorry.
Second.
Well, hold on a second because this is another one where we have different addresses on the, this is 8631, but here, would this be the same? Did I go ahead too much?
Nope, that's it.
Because this says 85.
8325.
Right.
Stay at 46.
8325 is Ava's, and then it was given a new address because it didn't have an address before, and the new address is 8631 West Flat. So when I did my agenda, I put adjacent 2 so everybody would know where it was.
Okay.
And then it got addressed with 8631 West Flat.
And the parcel number then?
The parcel number's correct.
Okay.
Let me ask this rather picky question. Under what address did Plan Commission sign off on this?
They signed off on 8631. The agenda, though, had the parcel next to blah blah with the parcel number, but then when we went through Plan Commission, I had the address.
Okay. Darla, you're comfortable with all that?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I don't remember where we were, anything from the public? And we're back to the council.
I think the motion had been made and seconded.
I apologize, so we'll roll call.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under old business tonight is supplemental fire service agreement with Richland Township. This is to renew the fire contract that we have with Richland Township for 2026. The one thing that's changed is he did a 4% increase on the propulsion factor, so other than that, it's the same. Okay. Questions from council? From the public? And back to council for action.
I make a motion to approve the supplemental, the supplemental fire services agreement with Richland Township.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call when you're ready.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. So now we're onto new business. The first is appointment to Board of Zoning Appeals.
I am very pleased to request that Captain Matt Seabot be appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals. He's with the Ellisville Fire Department, and I'm very pleased to get my fifth member, but ask that you approve him for that vacancy.
Okay. Questions from council?
This is more for Darla. That won't impact him receiving a salary from the fire department plus the stipend for the BZA. Would it lucrative?
It should, but if I, I did not know the name until tonight, so if I see a problem, I'll let you know.
Okay.
I will add that a police officer served on the BZA until he was appointed to the Plan Commission.
Okay.
You do have employees across the country.
Yeah, there are several aboard.
And he's not in a waiting rank.
Gotcha.
Is there a motion from council concerning Captain Seabot?
I will make a motion to appoint Captain Seabot to the appoint, point to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
Motion is second. When you're ready.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swafford.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
The next is fire truck financing and an order discussion. This should be fun. Yes. Two separate things here. The first one is I need to place the order for a vehicle. As you know, it can take three or four years to get one. I found out today they actually have one that will come off in August, September of '26, that if I let them know this week, we can actually put our name on that one and get it next year. That's one thing, so I'll need permission, if you're inclined to, allow me to sign that order, which doesn't do anything other than put my name in on it to pull it for us. The second part is the financing. If you remember, the last few trucks, several trucks we've done since '91, the town of Ellisville does all the paperwork and finances the truck. That way, we retain ownership of it. The truck is actually paid for through the contract with Richland Township that you just approved. So we already know there's funds in there to cover the semi-annual payments until it's paid for, and we checked with two different financial institutions, one local, and then the one that we've got a current truck financed with that's finishing up, and Noel's taking care of the paperwork with them, but there's no issues with financing another truck. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
How long will we be financing this for?
I won't know until tomorrow because they're going to send me the total cost of the truck, but knowing what the payments are, it has to fit within that, so.
Okay.
Probably going to be about 11 years.
As you know, I've said it, I'd like this to get out of the cycle of having to finance stuff, but there's no way we can.
It's a million-dollar vehicle.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
Yeah. And just so you know, when we do buy these trucks, we generally have them on the front line, what we call the front line, used every day for around 20, 22 years. After that, it goes to a backup, and it stays there until it's, hopefully, we can get 30 years out of them as long as it makes it. So the one you're wanting to order, what color is it? It's fire truck blue.
Yeah, okay. Other questions?
Is this going to be a replacement of a truck or is this a new?
It's kind of both. It's a replacement and an addition. This will take the place of a rescue truck that the fire pumps out of it right now. And it will take our first flat truck that we have now as for fire engine. That's the primary truck we use. It'll move it so that we have a backup unit should something happen. The rescue truck, same thing. It could, it's basically going to be a toolbox on wheels. It'll just be there for support. It can provide extra air. It can carry rescue equipment should the main truck be out of service for some. You're not going to get anything out of it with it not having a pump on it, so.
Is this the same size as the current engine?
I'm sorry?
Is this the same size as the current engine?
No, because it's actually going to combine two trucks into one. It's a little bit bigger.
Okay.
So instead of right now, like if we have a car accident, we put two guys in one truck, two in the other, so you're responding two trucks to the call. Now you're able to cover everything with all four people in one truck. So that in itself will help some wear and tear.
Leather seats, Bluetooth?
It does have Bluetooth because that's how the dealership talks through the computer when they're working on it.
Other questions from council? Okay, is there a motion?
What specifically do we need, this motion need to do to give you permission to?
What I need is for you to give me permission to get the order placed. The financing part, because it will need to be finished up before the next council meeting, if you can allow the town manager to take care of that paperwork. And like I said, we know what the payments are, so it obviously has to fit within that.
Okay. So I'll move to give Kevin Patton, Fire Chief, approval to put the order in for fire truck and let Mike Farmer, Town Manager, sign for the financing so we can get that done for the next meeting.
I'll second it. Whenever you're ready.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swaffer.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next is termination of cash bonds for Ruby Creek subdivision phases one and three.
Developer Phil Tap has completed subdivisions, subdivision Ruby Creek Phase one and three and is requested to be released off of the, both of those cash bonds. Everything's been completed in Phase one, but Phase three, the retention pond needs to be mucked out because of mud in the bottom. The dam is washing away and needs rip rack put back on it. The ditch from lots one seventy to one seventy-two needs to be graded properly so water flows to the retention area. Phil Tap is retired and no longer has the equipment to do the work. Mr. Tap spoke with Mike Farmer and has agreed to pay the town two thousand to complete the work. And Mike says that's a market rate.
Okay. Questions from council?
Yeah, Mike, how, how long ago was that retention pond done?
Three years ago. We've had a hundred-year ratings in a...
Understand.
It's got some sediment in it. Our stormwater person wrote up some things that needed to be addressed. I've probably talked to everybody that has backyards backed up to it. They all want a little of this or a little of that, including the grain. I think it's one of the times when government can help. We can go and do the work for the two thousand or less and address any of the locals' concerns without having to change orders of dealing with a third-party vendor or construction per, uh, product, uh, construction company. It's just, I think we can take care of it best.
I guess, are we going to have to keep doing this every three to five years?
Well, there's a lot to be said for how stormwater ponds are taken care of. It wasn't that long ago, I was on a panel about who should be taking care of them. My thoughts are sometime in the future, maybe, not unlike lift stations, private lift stations for sewer removal and discharge, not unlike that, or fire hydrants that protect the town, that the government's best suited to take care of it. We would have to make rearrangements or change ordinance in the future where that stormwater utility would be reimbursed for anticipated work and responsibilities to maintain them. But a lot of those kind of facilities are HOA run. As I said, in about five, ten years, there's no A, and then about ten more years later, there's no O, and then after twenty years, there's no H O A or A, and then the government's usually left to take care of it anyway. So there is functions that the government should be in charge of. And this is not in like a water or sewer utility. And I just think sometime in the future, we ought to be thinking about, about these kind of facilities. We take care of some in the town and some we don't. It's just been by arrangement. But that, I think that could, that's something that should be unified in the future.
I'm just concerned how soon, how, how little time has passed between having to do this. And if we're doing this multiplied by every subdivision that's out there, then, I mean, is there, is there, if we...
May I speak?
What's that? Yes.
I've been here twenty-four years, and in that twenty-four years, we've only cleaned out the ponds in Arrowhead one time. And this here is a, is a new subdivision. So you still got some sediment that's not settled yet. You still don't have the grasses there to filter before it gets to the pond. So that's why this pond has silted back in.
Okay, so that's...
Once we get it cleaned out, all the construction in the area has been done and completed. We get the grass growing back again. It should last a long time.
Okay.
Like I said, in the twenty-four years I've been here, we've only done the ponds in Arrowhead one time.
That, that's kind of what I wanted to hear. The only other thing I want to say, and then I'll shut up, is that I would prefer the work to be done first by the town before we release the cash bond.
Agreed. I agree.
Well, that would probably be next October. And I wouldn't say, I don't think that's necessary. I think we have the expertise. We've looked at the project, and it's not a big project. It's a day's work. Had we addressed this a month ago, we could do the work tomorrow and do it over the next day. So I'm, if there was a reason for the hesitation of wanting to hold the bond, I obviously would not oppose that and shouldn't get in the way of the recommendation. But I, I don't, there, there's no reason for, for us to hold the bond.
What if he just deposits the cash with the clerk?
And escrow essentially?
Well, my concern is what if there's more problems than we, they know about that's not customary and ordinary?
Well, everybody, we've all been out there. Stormwater guy's been out there. Rick's been out there. We could wind up it if you want, but I don't think it's necessary. And that's just my professional opinion.
How much is the bond for, Denise?
There's Phase one that has, as of the end of October with interest, three thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. And Phase three, as of October thirty-first, with interest, thirteen thousand seven hundred ten dollars and sixty cents.
And you'd say with a really good degree of confidence that what, we're not going to run into?
I'd say with complete confidence.
Okay.
My job is to make sure things work and we have construction people and developers do the correct work before we let them out of bonds. And my, my other job is to make sure that the developers and people doing developments in town get treated right and we can, when we can help them, we do.
So you think two thousand covers it?
Yep.
I'd be good with an escrow account.
What if we, what if we had a contingency on top of that? Because there's thirteen thousand being held.
Right.
Even if we double that, we're still giving back nine thousand, holding on to four thousand. Would you be amenable to that?
Sure, whatever you guys want to do.
That way he has a contingency.
I'm good with that.
You guys?
It's fine. So we're going to hold four thousand of the bond then?
Four thousand of this, release the rest. The four thousand goes in escrow until the work is complete.
That's fine with me, but do we need to talk to the contractor first or?
I think he's going to have to do what we tell him to.
That's true.
We'd see that or the bond stays in effect.
Yeah. I'm good with it.
So clarify, four thousand, you're going to hold in escrow, then we can release everything.
He can deposit four thousand escrow wherever the clerk and Darla feel fit. And then as far as, I think we're about to vote, if I don't misconsider my colleagues' opinions here, we'll release the rest of the bonds.
Okay.
So is there a motion?
I can make a motion to terminate the cash bonds for the Ruby Creek subdivision phases one and three. Develop for Phil Tap with the condition that a four thousand dollar escrow account is funded and created for future work. And upon that work's time, the remaining balance would be refunded back to him.
Good with that?
Could you repeat that?
Probably not.
No, probably not. I'd have to look at the recording now.
Well, you're, you're saying remaining portion of the bond less two thousand?
Well, okay. Four thousand's held.
The bond's released contingent on an escrow being established at four thousand.
I think that's what, I think that's what I said.
And then at the end of the year...
Hold on, I think she knows what I said.
Then if there's more than four thousand, whatever's left of the four thousand will be returned after the work is completed.
Right, that's what I'm, exactly.
I do understand that. Initially, when this was talked about, my understanding was, is that if the council's pleasure was to release the bonds, then the developer was going to give the town two thousand dollars back. So in holding the four thousand dollars, will I then only be releasing two thousand to the developer? Because then the town would not have the two thousand dollars back to us, so I'm confused.
Does it really?
Did you say, right, you'd be releasing the rest of the bond, right? Not just two thousand?
Separate this out if I can real quick, guys. If he posts four thousand in escrow, one action, we agree to release both bonds, the total of seventeen thousand, whatever else. So they're two separate transactions. It's not like we're holding four thousand out of this initial seventeen thousand. It's four thousand over here contingent upon when that's satisfied. These can be released, then he can draw down out of that four thousand as work requires. When he certifies it's done, we'll refund the rest to him.
Okay.
That make sense?
And the estimated cost out of that four is two thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's no different than the developer posting a cash bond to begin with, so.
So I, I guess where the confusion, I don't see whether it makes a difference either way. Does it really?
I just think it'll be easier to clean up.
Whatever way's easier for the, the paperwork, I don't care. I'll put that on the amend, the, the motion if I have to.
So I have a motion, but I did not hear the second.
Be clear about the motion.
Okay.
So the motion is to have Mr. Tap...
Termination, right.
Post a four thousand dollar bond or give Noel four thousand dollars for, to be held in escrow. Once that's done, the bond will be released.
That is correct.
Okay.
Let's confuse it a little bit more. We can release partial bonds anyway. Why don't, why don't he have to put a new bond into four grand? Why don't we release everything but four grand?
Because he can't call, he can't pull down the bond without council permission. This way he can't...
No, I'm saying we release all but four grand on the bond because we've done that a million times where...
And that's originally what I was thinking.
Fifty percent of it, or we release...
Because he would have to come back to council to draw that bond down to pay the town. If he establishes the escrow now that he can draw upon, that way we're cutting ourselves out of this middle step.
Yeah.
And he'll know where he stands.
And ultimately, it's this, it ends, at the end of the road, it's exactly the same.
We just went round and round and round to get there.
Right.
Yes.
Let's just hold the bond, forget it.
Well, I hate to hold a gentleman seventeen thousand.
Okay, it was a joke.
So I'll second what is his motion, if that makes it easier.
Yeah. We'll figure it out tomorrow.
Darla will make it right.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second.
Whenever you're ready.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
Dan Swaffer.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Discussion regarding proposing adding a road to inventory to town of Ellesville.
That'd be me. There's some interest that if the town would be interested to go back after the Richmond Beam Blossom Healthcare has resurfaced and upgraded the road, if you all would be interested in personnel talking back with RBB about go ahead and taking that into inventory.
Wasn't that, wasn't that a need of major repair?
It, and it was done.
Okay.
And it's been all, it's all, it's up, you know, everything's all, all good. They went in and repaired all the bad spots. They repaved all of it, all the way out to the highway. It's still the responsibility ownership of the RBB Healthcare. But there's inquiry in the complex if the town would still be interested in, in bringing that into inventory for us to maintain, plow snow, all that there going into and stopping at the nursing home property.
Does any part of that broke a flood?
Not that I'm aware of.
What, what caused the damage to the road? Just years of where or?
Yeah, about a thousand ambulances a year. Yeah, I mean, it had a lot of...
So that's still going to continue, correct?
No, they got a new entrance. They, they don't use that entrance near as much as they do. There's, there's a lot of visitors, but I think the ambulances come in on the east, don't they? They come in the east entrance as well as the fire department as well. So, but, I mean, gosh, that's been put in over twenty years ago, so.
Denise, is there any other parcel there that will ever access that roadway if we take it into inventory?
I don't believe so.
Even possible to, because it backs up to Stewart Park, does it not?
Correct, yeah.
Backs up to the railroad corridor.
It has rails to trails and then crosses over.
There's ones, Vacalot to its east that I think they own. And it's in between the new Jimmy John's and, and the Richmond Senior Care, so. But I don't know how, I don't know how in the future they'll access that. I don't know if they'll make them tie into either the road going into the apartments by Jimmy John's or, I, I don't know how the end, I don't... It actually, you know, the Vacalot already has an entrance built in, so that's, that's how they'll do it.
I guess I'm just trying to think from a fiscal standpoint for taxpayers, what would be the upside of us doing this?
Do you want me to answer?
Go ahead.
Well, maybe nothing, but we've had different business owners and currently the dentist there asked for us to do this originally. The Richmond Senior Care was in on a fix where they was going to pay for the materials and we was going to do the labor, and you guys asked for them to pay for everything. And so that's what they did. There's a strip mall there with Edward Jones and a couple other places.
So that uses the same road, right?
And so it's a community area that's used by a lot of people, including the Richmond Senior Care and ambulances. So traditionally, we plowed that because nobody else did or it wasn't plowed soon enough. And we were just being the good guys we are. And so that would be our only interest is just in, for the sake of the community. We can make somebody else do it and just leave it alone.
Uh, I mean, for plowing, I can kind of see. But what I don't want is, you know, us having major road repairs, you know, even twenty, thirty years down the road, it's...
I'm getting a lot more bang for our buck in the last four or five years. We're doing a lot more preventative maintenance. That road's never had any preventative maintenance done to it once. I've got streets now that's been paved ten years and they're looking just almost as good as the streets that are two or three years old because we're doing the cracked ceiling, liquid road. It's just all the treatment plans have been implemented long to make it last longer. This private lane never had that done to it, so.
I guess there's the upside.
How much was the material cost when we talked about doing this before? How much was the material costs when we talked about doing this before? Four, eight thousand, something like that, maybe eleven thousand, I can't remember. So, it's not a major amount of money?
Well, they already have it, on different entries.
Theoretically. What's council's pleasure?
I mean, I, I see both ways on it. I think, being good neighbors, it would be beneficial, especially if there's no plowing and stuff. If you think you can maintain the roads to where it's not gonna be a big stress on the town, and I don't see any harm in it. I did have a question, though. Don't we get some kind of funding per mile each of?
Yeah, well, I mean, each, each mile, I'm not sure what the ratio is for that, but we do get funding for each mile of road we have under inventory.
And how long is that road, do you know?
It's pretty long, that is, a thousand feet.
Yeah.
I'll build a lot of downside later.
Yeah.
Potentially, if we don't.
Maybe, quarter mile.
Again, does someone have a motion?
And, and mind you, this is just to see whether if RBB would still be interested in letting it be. How'd we do that, Darla, with Jacob? Remember we did that? It really was, it was a.
Yeah, we entered into an agreement, and I think because it was a private development, they actually deeded over. I'd have to look at the file, but I think they actually deeded over property to the town.
It'd be, it's basically the same thing we did with Jacob Drive, which was in, well, called Berks's Division, but it's, what is that position called?
Yeah, right.
Okay, so we really don't need to do anything this evening?
Not really, I just wanted to
Okay.
get feelers from you, are you guys interested with me?
Understand, I think we were all misconsidering what you had done.
Assume this, so, to see whether, I mean, RBB may say, well, we fixed it, we, we're fine, we're gonna keep it.
Okay.
I suggest you table it, think about it, and if you're interested, you can come back and let us know.
Don't know we need to table it, because it just says discussion of, not resolution to.
I mean, I would be interested to see what they have to say.
Right.
I mean, so.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I need. Long way around again.
We got there, welcome to Monday.
Thank you very much.
Next, under new business, selection of candidates for the reorganization committee for town and township.
Well, this is ours to just be ten.
Well, yeah, but I had to read what's on here.
Oh, that's right.
I just put it on there so we could talk about it, make sure everybody understands. We need to get a list together. The community needs to know, we're still looking for names. And township's doing the same, and so, I just wanted to make sure we're on track to be ready to maybe have another, a work session prior to the December eighth meeting, where we can work on maybe bringing a list and putting it together so we can move on.
Have we not had any, have, have we had people respond yet?
We've had a few, and then between the staff and myself and people I've talked to, I, I have a list. And so, I mean, you know, we're getting there, but because, you know, we're trying to get the community involved, we just wanted to talk about it, mention it, and, and make sure the board's on, on in on it, so we can maybe vote on it on December eighth. And I will, will, by email, suggest that maybe we have a work session, depending on what the township says.
I would have preferred to vote on it tonight, but we really haven't had any discussion of candidates. But also, the township, they're not gonna be voting till December anyway, so even if we voted tonight.
That's right.
It, it's not gonna move things forward.
Doesn't move anything forward.
No.
Can we put it out on our website, too, that we're still looking for names and?
We have.
Good. Any other way that we can advertise it?
Well, tonight's one of them, and we've got a, we've got a new email, questions@ellisville.in.gov, and people can submit their names that way as well. So, yeah, I mean, anything else, I, I know, any other?
How many names have we got right now, approximately?
Well, I got, I have ten on my phone, and so, the three or four came up today. So, I haven't heard much from the board. We've got maybe, you know, a name there, so, at, at the end of the day, we'll have more names than we'll have seats, but I just, I think it's appropriate to let everybody know and, and keep talking about it, so anybody that might wanna be involved is considered.
And to the rest of the council, the ones we don't choose, I mean, we can, if, if they wanted to be involved with this, we can, the reorganization committee can look at those. Yeah, because there'll be numerous subcommittees.
Yeah, there'll be a lot of seats after all the subcommittees, so there'll, there'll be room for, for people that would've been good candidates, but we can't pick them off.
Correct.
So, since this is a selection, entertain a motion to table.
Okay, I make a motion to table the selection of candidates for the reorganization committee for town and township.
Second.
Motion to second, when you're ready, please.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Next, we're under privilege of the floor, I mean, we're having business for the council's not part of our regular agenda this evening.
All right, good evening, members of council. My name is David Henry, I am Monroe County Councilor-at-Large, one of your three for the county. I'm happy to be here tonight, and I was here primarily to absorb some of the conversation around the proposed merger between Ellisville and Richland Township, that has, of course, the attention of the county, and I'm, I'm all ears and very open to, to hearing the conversation. Anytime our voters are considering a big change like this, I don't think there should be prejudgment. I'm here to learn, just as much as I think the whole public is. Of course, I want to honor the fact that Senate Bill or Senate Enrolled Act One clearly put us in this space as a county government and township governments and town governments to start having conversations of necessity. And we all know invention is the mother of necessity, so I appreciate what you're all trying to do here as you're looking at opportunities to merge tax bases and provide good services in this corner of the county. On another note, I just wanted to at least compliment, because I've not been here before, but at least in a public space, had a good opportunity, oops, there we go. Good opportunity to review the envisioned Ellisville master plan, or the plan you did together. I just wanted to commend this body and the community for, well, having a community conversation, which I know sometimes, maybe outside Ellisville, we don't do as well, in the county side or in other parts of the county, but it's refreshing to read a document where folks come together and, and think about the community's future holistically there. So, I look forward with open ears on the process that you're engaging in for Ellisville and Richland. I look forward to continuing conversations with town staff and, and all of you as you move forward. But thank you, thank you.
Thank you for being, being here today.
Anyone else? See no one in chambers, and no one online, move now to supervisor comments.
Well, first of all, I think, did you give them the 2026 dates for holidays and paydays?
I did not, I didn't know what the council's pleasure was.
Okay, well, they're, they, we propose they be the same as this year. If you can't remember, we can tell you, but. We, I just want to make sure we're good with just leaving it like it was this year. I mean, anything we need to change this year?
We can change on the fly if we need to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I will tell you, just to keep you, kind of keep on the idea of being a little mixed up when we're talking. We are going to be closed the day after Thanksgiving, which is a paid holiday, and then we're gonna be closed the Friday after Christmas, as well as the paid holidays, the twenty fourth and twenty fifth, and the twenty sixth, we're closing Town Hall. Everybody's taking a PTO day then, and also after the first, which aligns in the week the same way. So, the second, actually, the second falls on.
That's your twenty-five calendar month.
I know, but the second falls on the Friday. So, we're gonna, that, we're gonna be closed that day, too, just so you know. And everybody's taking a PTO on that day, too.
So, for twenty-six, it'll be first and second closed?
Yes. Actually, it's New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, which are paid holidays in Ellisville, and then we're taking the Friday off, because it runs into a weekend, and they're using PTO to close the Town Hall.
Okay, because that is a change, I, I don't have any, I, I act almost thinking the same thing.
Yeah, we've always had New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, Christmas Eve and things.
Well, yeah, I'm not, the, the eve and day, I'm not, it's the Friday that, the day after. I understand you just come back for one day and go on a weekend, it's kind of counterproductive. I just didn't know if we needed to put that on the calendar as closed for this holiday, so.
Typically, in the past, we've done this last year. We put something on the website, we put something on social media, and then we put something on doors, so that the public is aware.
And this is just the paid ones that are extra, but this, this will be pulled in from PTO, okay?
We'll pay it, we'll put it on December's bill, too, if it's not too long.
Without opening this, the most giant can of worms. So, hopefully, we're not gonna do this for ninety-five minutes. We didn't give them a raise.
Parker?
We didn't give them a raise this year.
Yeah.
What do you think about just giving them the days off, instead of requiring to use the PTO, and we'll add a day to each police and fire?
Well, this only involves the Town Hall.
Right.
And.
Or what if they don't want to use their PTO?
I guess it involves DPW.
Well, yeah, it involves.
Yeah. Well, then, the, I mean, the fire and the police have to work that way.
Give them each an extra day, they can take later.
Like any other holiday?
We said give them an extra day.
Well, it is the most wonderful time of the year, so, sure.
So, how about, I'll make a motion, we give the town manager permission to arrange the benefit, the PTO schedule, or non-PTO schedule, to the benefit of the employees at the council's direction, I guess.
I still think it needs to come back for us for approval.
We're about to give it to him.
Well, yeah, that's the only change here, and we're just talking about this here, right?
Whatever he sees fit, within what we're talking about here, after Christmas, after Thanksgiving, whatever he sees fit, add days or make these adjustments.
So, the PTO is not required?
Yeah.
Is your motion?
It makes no sense to have them open in here, but what I don't want is the new employee having to burn one of fourteen days to be here. And we didn't give them a raise, so let's give them the day off. And police and fire, you know you gotta be here, we signed up for that. Guess what, here's your extra day of burn later in the year.
Right.
You can have Christmas July the thirtieth.
Well, shouldn't we just approve then, Friday the second is a holiday pay? And because six, one half dozen of the other.
Six, one half dozen of the other, but it doesn't benefit, still, they could people use PTO at some point.
Right, what's that?
Because if you're closed on the holiday, you're getting holiday pay, but we're not giving police and fire holiday pay necessarily, because they're still here.
I know, but they're, police and fire have a holiday ordinance, that they handle holidays.
Oh, one?
Yeah, so that would just fall under that.
I don't care how we want to do it, I really don't. Do you have a thought?
Not right now.
If we're giving them pay, it equates to salary ordinance, if we're giving days off, it doesn't. So, what was your motion? To allow Mike to make the adjustments to their schedules needing, without, without penalizing PTO and being allowed him to award police and fire who have to be here, because DPW is off those days, an extra day, or however many days he works in the schedule to their benefit?
That's a day, I'll second it.
You okay?
I think we can give them that. Police and fire will get an extra holiday, too, right?
Yeah.
But they can't use it when they need to, no.
Well, I don't think he's, I think he's thinking.
They'll find, they'll use that at some point.
Yeah, no, I'm voting on the.
Giving Mike permission to.
Mike permission to make these adjustments, so that people are not having, so it may be the day after Thanksgiving, the day after Christmas, the day after New Year's. So, maybe three days in total, or whatever his pleasure. Let him run the town, that's what he does for a living.
Good, you got a second?
Motion to second, when you're ready.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Dan Swaffer?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On behalf of the workforce, thanks for the information.
Thank you very much.
Kind of forgetting where we are here, so why don't you just start?
Well, a long time ago, no. So, the only other thing I'll say on the way here tonight, it was already dark, and I don't know if anybody's noticed, but somebody, I wish I had their names, somebody has bought the Matthews Mansion, and it's always looked very nice, but they've put some extra work into it, and night lighting and all the landscaping they've done, it is a jewel. So, I mean, you know, when it comes to amenities that the town has and things that are particularly unusual and nice, hats off to them, it, it's just really a nice place to go by and look at, especially at night, because they've got it lit up so nicely, and it looks like a mansion, so, thanks for that.
Just decrease traffic on that roadway a thousand percent.
There you go. That's all I have.
Mr. Deputy Chief?
I have nothing.
Chief?
Nothing at all? Well, the DPW guys have been working really hard to get the leaves all picked up. I know there was a lot out there for a little while, seemed like they all hit it once. I failed to be able to talk to the guys in the meeting, because it was in the meeting, to see how far along they got. We're getting really close, so I was going to let the residents know that we've got at least another week into December, that we'll be picking up leaves. I'm sure you've all seen on social media, the not-so-good news is coming next Monday. Main Street will be down to one lane, if weather permits, thereby sell Main. The state, or EME, maybe the contractor for State of Indiana, will be starting that deck on that bridge in the fighting process. It's a bid that ought to be like a three-hundred-day job, so you're looking at September, in September next year, before this is due.
Hey, three hundred day?
Yeah.
Three hundred days.
Oh.
It's a three-hundred-day project.
Suggestion to everybody, use a different route.
Oh, yeah. So, just wanted to put that out there for y'all.
That's, that three hundred days is conservative, they have to do that, but they were pretty diligent at getting the eastbound done, and I think they come in under their projected.
It was still like, what, three months, four months?
Can I run?
It was like July, or July, that. But I talked to the superintendent of that job, and they were ahead of schedule the whole time, and that's the same superintendent that's gonna be doing the other job, so we're lucky enough to have that same guy.
Yeah, they did a great job with it.
I'm just, what did they do?
The.
It, I mean, because.
Well, I mean, you think about it, forty-six is twenty years old now.
I mean, they just redid what, I mean, they didn't do anything different.
It's two thousand, twenty-five years old, yeah. So, so what they did is they, they go through, they take out all the concrete, they put in new rebar, new anchors, redo the concrete.
Okay, just, as Scott said, preventative maintenance, just, okay, that I understand. I just didn't, because this one, are they, you said they're widening the bridge for the sales street?
Yeah, there won't be, the anchor will be a sidewalk on the south side of that bridge.
Okay, awesome.
I don't have anything, thank you.
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move to council comments, I'm gonna go first. Want to extend my congratulations to Mike and everybody who worked on the project. Stewart Park looks phenomenal. So, for those who had the brilliance to make it happen, and those who had the fortitude to see it through, thank you, congratulations. You're coming upon an opening here shortly, that hopefully attend, and thank you for the cow going back to the top. That really made some folks happy. That was a big thing.
It's been in hiding for a long time.
Yeah.
I tried to milk it, it didn't work.
Wow. We, we did have a request for T-shirts, so just so you know. Other council?
Just wishing everybody happy Thanksgiving, be safe going to family, friends, and just remember, be grateful for even the adversities in life.
Anyone? See no further, we stand adjourned.
Thanks, have a good Thanksgiving.